What we did is to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, Mark.
Morning.
I had a corn, called a meeting to work with JJ, it's not gonna be here today, so. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
And I will second it. No further discussion, all's favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion will carry.
Rich. Morning. Just a couple, we're working on rock maps and our annual paint striping map to get that out. I think we could deliver you of our mower tractor this week, last week. And then we did get quite a few dollars in grants for attachments for our skidoo from Debbie's. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it seems like we did pretty well. We did put a number in for trying to get some traffic signals instead. Would help us out if we're gonna have to have two flaggers or a flagger if we're trying to do a patch or something, the signals can take care of it. We can have those two guys helping, but we didn't get that, but we've got some stuff in Mitchell County where borrowing to see if we can get those to work. So that's where we're at in maintenance, I suppose, once the roads get fit enough to lay out a little bit, we can not worry about, oh, we'll start blading and a little bit less moisture out of it, that's where turning it in mud, but. So then I've got the DOT budget and program for discussion and approval. You'll see the two sheets like this, one of them's budget, one of them's program. But you'll see this sheet also is kind of a summary of the budget, which is the same as my county budget. So the state and the county budget should match as far as numbers go. So we can review that, or you guys can review that, we're not really bumping, we always bump up a little bit every year on expenses just because things increase cost wise, but none of the items really have jumped up too much, the variables are construction and and equipment, they're the two variables that kind of get budgeted last because that's if we have any money left over, that's what we can, we can put it in to get some new things, so you'll see there's 2.5 million in construction and that's gonna burn some of our carryover and most of that's gonna be for paving around down by the quarry over by Funal, that concrete road, it's a local road, so we can't use any foreign market funding or any other funding.
You're just overlaying it or what?
Yeah, we're gonna do a concrete overlay on it, go from the city limits all the way around, so.
Are we gonna use the TIF money on that though?
No, I didn't put any TIF money in that one, we've got some carryover money that we're gonna try to burn down a little bit.
So much of an overlay do you do over that concrete, that's what, six inches?
That one we'll do six inches on that one.
Six inches of asphalt?
No, we'll do six inches.
Oh, there's six inches of concrete?
Yeah, we'll put an interlayer on it like we did west of town, well, west of town, this first stretch to the interstate, we put an interlayer down just to see what it would do. We didn't need to put one down, but we put one down just because I was trying to figure out whether we could kind of control some of the reflective cracking and so.
What's that, how does that affect the bridge structure when we go to that?
We don't go over the bridges with it. We tie into the existing approaches, so we'll mill down.
You'll mill down.
And we'll get handwork up to the existing approach, so, yeah, we don't go over the tops of the bridges with it.
Okay.
That'll add, well, first of all, I think they're designed enough for that much dead load.
Right.
So, so we'll blend back in, so when, what's nice is when we get there, well, depending on how the bridge approaches are on some of those structures, you know, we'll we'll either go right up to the bridge with a new approach, or we'll hold back knowing if the bridge is in the future plan, we won't wanna put new concrete in and then in five years take out all that concrete if we're gonna redo the bridge, so.
So does that include the little stretch to put, or that's okay?
That one's okay, yeah, I think that's a newer.
It's newer one, right, yeah?
Yeah, yep, so. So that's in the program, if you wanna look at the program, I guess the map is probably the best telltale of what we're doing in the program. This'll include local projects as well as bridge projects and foreign market money. What we plan for five years, and actually, I think I say this every year, what's coming up in 2026 is probably the most critical, because after that, everything else changes every year when we get well, the bridge inspections this winter, that'll change probably the priorities of some of the bridges, but just some things to look at. And then this other sheet that you have is a Excel spreadsheet, I try to run our balance of foreign market and bridge money. We're only allowed to borrow four years ahead on our foreign market, our foreign market funding, we're allowed to borrow four and a half years on our bridge stuff, so I try to program things, you'll see red, red is when we're in the negative on the estimated balance, and when you get to the far right column, that's estimated years borrowed ahead, and when we hit that trigger, we can't do any projects until we get that balance. In fact, probably right now a little bit generous in if we're borrowed so many years ahead and a project takes us beyond, we can't borrow the money, can't use that money either, so. It's a, this is just a balancing act that I use in the, in the office when I'm trying to program everything out. Just kind of a heads up is how the money goes out for those funds, not local funds, just foreign market and bridge. So. The budget's looking like, we've got an expenditure for the year of $29,026,894. Looking at a potential carryover of $329,000. That'll probably be higher than that when we're done, just because we don't know how this year's gonna finish out yet, we usually carry over some. Assuming we're gonna carry over a healthy portion of money, we'll use that carryover balance to pave that road down. So, and if it doesn't work out, I guess we'll find a different way to do it, or we'll just hold off till we get them. Kind of, kind of spend some of that carryover balance, and I wanna keep the carryover balance, because we never know when we run into the what ifs, and the way the funding's going now, it's nice to have a balance, but we need to kind of invest it too into the roads, so. So I don't know if you've got any questions on any of the stuff as far as program. These are all, like, the bridges and stuff are things that we just, when, when, when our consultant comes through and does our bridge inspections, they kind of give us timelines and, hey, this probably needs to be in the next four to 10 years, we'll probably wanna replace this bridge, or, so I prioritize with that and with the money we have in our, in our bridge funds. Now, we will have some federally projects that are eligible for the money, but we don't have enough money, so then I've turned it into local. In local funding, so. On the very back sheet of, I think it's the program, yeah, on the program, there's a summary sheet as to what we're looking at for expenditures in each of the next five years. And you'll see in 28, we've got $6 million of local money, and that's estimated for 105, but I don't know if we're gonna have $6 million of local money unless, unless the board wants to use TIF dollars to do that project.
I had to at some point, I mean, it's just.
Because I had asked Elizabeth, and she said normally within three years that should be gone, and I, what are we on? At least year two, if not three?
So we need to be looking at that.
And it just sits there.
What's that?
The TIF money, there's over $2 million of TIF money.
Yeah, that's in some of those bridge projects that we're still working on getting, getting paid out, well, is there that much left? Because we should, I think we saved quite a bit doing those other projects locally with smaller structures, so we're gonna have a little bit there.
I'll reconcile that and get it to you again.
Yeah, I mean, if there's some extra, maybe for a couple of bridges too, or something.
Right, we've done, yeah, so there might be some future bridges coming up, but if they want it reconciled sooner, we'll have to. Because those, anything else we add to it now probably isn't in the urban renewal plan to be spent on that.
Because I guess after the three-year mark, the IRS starts looking at you.
Yeah, so it's no, well, there's no, he said it there for this.
No, 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 we've got, we've got, we've got projects that are still getting designed to use some of that money up. I don't know if there's $2 million worth anymore in that.
Pipes going across the road, or like, say some more?
We gotta stay ahead of it.
Anyway, those are the, those are the funding numbers for the next 10 years, or 10 years, five years. Feels like 10 years, brother. So.
Looks like you got pretty good handle on it, I mean, you're always gonna hear about a road if somebody wants done, but.
Well, and we have that every year, but.
It's good to have a plan.
And my plan, it's always subject change, but we kind of just focus on the year in advance. We do wanna start planning ahead for, you know, that's why we have a five-year plan is to try to plan ahead, but not everything stays in, in one's years, that we plan to do the work, so. Like I said, this, this budget for the DOT is, mirrors the county budget, I don't, when, is that one, did that one get approved already, the county budget?
Next year.
So, doesn't change anything here, I just need to get my DOT one turned in as well.
Any other questions going on, audience?
Nope, I just, I don't forget about that 105, 105 project out here. But, I mean, there's a lot of millions going in there.
What's that?
That 105 project.
Oh, yeah, that's a.
A big project.
Yeah, we, well.
We can burn up a lot of TIF there.
Well, we can, but we need to have that, right now, we don't have that in a specific urban renewal funding program, right? We got all of our roads in the urban renewal, but we have to define the specific projects we spend it on, correct?
You have that list.
But I don't, I think when we first did that TIF, we didn't have all, I think it was two roadway projects and a bunch of bridges, and then we kept some of the other roadway projects out for that first borrow.
I know there was a lot of bridges in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Check it out, and then we could get, we could do that to be, so we're ready for it, I mean.
Yeah.
If there's a time for him, but it would be good, that's all, it's gonna need to be done.
Yeah, we had, we had a bunch of things, we had some roadways here that we didn't include in that one round of TIF, and we had all these other bridges, so.
It's always a question, it's why don't, why didn't you go east of town?
Well, and.
Because it's money, guys.
Because, yeah, right, so we've been kind of tracking this, and we're almost caught up on all these. But the thing is, is when we borrowed the money, we had estimates of what everything was gonna cost.
Right.
And we were able to find ways to do it a little cheaper, so we will have a surplus of that TIF money because we did find ways to put, you know, putting twin pipe in instead of box covers because we could hydraulically do it, saves a lot of money, so that's a good thing.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, then I'll have to figure out how to include more or something, so that we can get it cleared out, because it needs to be zeroed out.
Yep, it needs to, yeah.
Use it or lose it.
Well, I don't know, is, is any, could, could, could any of it be used when we go to the building project? Same.
I'm an attorney.
No, I know, I mean, you'd have to include it, I mean, if we've already got it designated for these projects and those projects save money.
In other words, if it's already in the urban renewal plan, can we take that money and?
Can we use it for?
Eat it up there a little bit.
Right, I'm not an attorney, but I would say I think you can.
I would think you'd be able to do that.
If we're gonna use TIF anyway for those, probably for that project in general, we've got that. Maybe it's an amendment to the existing.
But if you keep snowballing, it's a lot of, it's a lot of tracking and making sure the money, like the ARPA money, that's been, if, if somebody doesn't spend it all, then you gotta figure out if you can do anything, or what you can do with it, or if it's gotta go back to the feds, or it's just a lot of tracking.
A lot of tracking, big word, it's not, yeah. Get it figured out.
Yep.
We'll get it figured out.
Yep, stand on top of that, we don't.
So, when reviewed, I'll take a motion to approve the FY 26 DOT budget, budget five-year construction plan.
I will make a motion.
I will second it, any further discussion? Take your own, all's favor.
Aye.
Both same side, motion will carry.
Thank you, that's all I've got for you this morning. I do wanna thank you guys for allowing me to go to the NACE convention last week, that was very well attended by a lot of the Iowa engineers, and we did, our Washington County engineer is now the president of NACE for the year, and we've got Kiyoka County engineer got the central region representative for our area, and then the Fayette County engineer received the national award for things, so. It's always nice to find out what other states are doing, and also finding out that other states are getting the same complaints we get all the time, I was talking to an engineer, talking about, I don't remember what state he was from, but we were talking about rock. I said, okay, well, what's, what's the abrasion numbers you guys are using out there for how durable your rock is? Oh, we get 45, and I'm like, holy cow, our abrasion numbers are in the upper twenties. That's a hard rock.
It's a hard rock.
And these people got 45 is the great rock for them, so we're blessed around here with some pretty durable rock.
Step travel throughout the state, take a gravel road here and there, and you can, you can see the difference, and, you know, somebody did have some vision years ago, widen them out, raise them up. And we're fortunate, we have good rock in the county, but you go other areas, and there's some pretty nasty roads. Still low, still narrow. And also we're pretty fortunate.
We are fortunate.
We have to keep them up too.
Yes, yep, yep, and we, the same conversation we had, it was a, there was a, we were talking about a gravel road upgrade, there was a forum for that, and they were talking about how a lot of these states are sitting there, this was an Iowa county engineer talking, and he says, have any of you ever gone out and just checked to see how thick the rock is on your gravel roads? And there's only a couple of us that raised our hands, and we, it's been a while since we've done it, but when you only got that much rock on your road as a surface, and you think you should add more, that tells you how much it's degrading over time, it just, it doesn't. There's so much traffic on some of those gravel roads, and now that you don't have the crust you think you have to support some of those heavy loads, so.
Good question for you, and I didn't get all the details on it, we were at the last meeting there at the DOT meeting, and one of the supervisors brought up, they did this on their bike trail, you know, they paved and then they, something they tie that together with some chemicals, and they were gonna even try it on some of their gravel roads.
There's a.
Keep it from, you know, it keeps moving around, keeps the dust down, or all that.
I don't know what they, if they were using it on the gravel itself, I know that.
I think so, and it takes, it's, you actually gotta incorporate.
Yep, so there's a bunch of these, you can do cement stabilization, which is what the wind tower people did out in the northeast corner when they were here.
Okay.
There's other materials that are liquid that you mill into the road's surface, and that helps bind all the finds together a little bit. Several processes like that, in fact, I don't know, it was a couple of years ago, I went down to Butler County, was doing a mile stretch that I think it was to their, I don't know if it was their wastewater treatment or their dump site, they had a lot of potholing and stuff, and it holds up. I think cement stabilization's probably a longer term, but some of these other products, you can do it. You can add it in. Takes a little bit of coordination because we don't have the, I call it a, it's like a big mill, but it's a, they call it a, oh, there's a term for it now, one county had bought a a loader-operated milling type tiller machine that you gotta incorporate it as you mill it, and then you gotta blade it, roll it, and then, yeah, so there are, there's a lot of products out there, and that was one, one, all the sessions we were able to go to, I didn't go to that one, because we've seen a lot of it around here already, but I think one product's like base one, there's cement stabilizer, there's fly ash stabilization, there's all kinds of these other products you can incorporate into the soils to stabilize them, kind of keep them a little bit more firm before you put your rock down. Doesn't last forever, but it lasts for quite a while.
You mean, it was Franklin County, and supervisor was, and I think they're, they do their Dona Road, I know they did some of their bike trails that way.
Yep, someone will do that, and some of them like, if they were ever to, some of them, a lot of times they'll do it if they're gonna upgrade the road, a lot, a lot of counties will take, and they'll put this product in there, then they'll put stone on it, and then they'll seal coat it.
Yeah.
Gives a seal coat a little bit, where we don't use a lot of seal coat, because, but they'll do that to try to, on some other higher traveled roads, to do that kind of process. So, it's out there.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if, when Jim Hyde here, if he tried some of that once, I can't remember where he would have tried it, I, he always had a slang term for the, Jim Hyde was old school, and it was bathtub chemistry back then, you know, you're like, how can you make this product, and it works, but.
It's all, but maybe something that's, that allows better.
Yep, no, there's a lot out there.
There's a way it out, whether, you know, cost is, cost is always a big thing, so.
Yep.
Yeah, appreciate it, that's all I had, I guess.
Do you want to sign them?
I don't necessarily need it signed, because when I, when I submit it through the DOT, I'll just say it's in the meeting notes for this meeting.
Okay.
You wanna sign when you can, but I haven't had one signed for a long time, because I always just know that it's in the meeting.
All right, we got drainage, so the first thing you got under discussable possible action, DB 11 main state line.
Yeah, what do you guys want to do?
Go down the list.
So, no, I'll talk about what do they wanna do with that. So it was one 46-inch culvert, so Colton talked to Minnesota engineer, and it was a, it was a 146-inch pipe. They replaced it two summers ago with two 46s, while now.
Minnesota did.
Minnesota did.
Minnesota did, yep.
So now that we're getting wetness and rain, two 46s are dumping down, coming down that stream, and outletting in one 46 and the main K for DB 11, and I guess Jasper's have gotten ahold of, I don't know which Jaspers, but, or no, Perkins. Perkins has got ahold of Colton and said it's washing out.
So I.
It's too much water coming in, one 46.
And I kind of remember, this goes back when Kenny was still there, and I think we were up there and looked at that stuff. Deer Creek Tour or something like that, but if it's an issue, we're gonna have to address it, I suppose, I mean, we can't, we can't tell Minnesota no, we can't go up there and block it.
Right, the problem is, is that everybody solves it by throttling up the water upstream and not considering downstream at all, and sooner or later, we gotta start, you know, as dry as we get, we gotta start maybe trying to think about controlling how much, nobody wants to be flooded out, but some of these, and granted, we're getting heavier rains.
Well, we're moving more.
We're not getting, yeah, we're, we're moving a lot more water, everything's tiled more, but you know, it used to be we'd get steady rains every now and again, I would get these big delusions of rain, and, and it's in here and it's gone right away, and that's the problem we're seeing a lot, is that everybody wants to move the water out of here fast, but all it does is floods everybody else downstream, and we start seeing that kind of a problem, so.
So they put in two 46s, if we put in two 46s downstream to handle the extra water coming through, is it gonna cause problems after that?
It's almost like, plus, plus, you're taking two 46s upstream, but
you go downstream, and now you've got more drainage coming in along with that, because every downstream culvert or bridge gets bigger because you got more drainage.
They need to be fixed or whatever.
Because then 11 is, because it kind of looks like a little natural water stream, it dumps into that main K, and that main K dumps in the main A.
It's a chain, it's a chain reaction, is what it ends up being.
Or the 46, the two 46s on the state line.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, my, I don't know, but I, I know they tried to years ago in the west of Raven, they put in an oversized pipe that they're, because they're bound by the Deer Creek drainage, like the federal agreements they have of how much water they can send to Iowa. And so on the pipe that they oversigned before, they actually had to go back in and weld restrictor plates to get it back to the same flow as what it was designed to handle.
Is that something we should look into?
As I say, it would be, the, the NRCS office would be the ones who have it, but the reason that that's the case is historically, when they, when they did the Deer Creek drainage project, Minnesota didn't buy in. And so their water is restricted by that, by that agreement. Everyone on the Iowa side bought in, and that's why things are engineered the size the way they are, and Minnesota chose not to. So every time they've tried to do it for the last 50 years, they put in a bigger pipe, they have to seal off part of that pipe because it's too much water, but.
So, they've somewhat washed their hands of that and gave it to us, in a sense, so does that change, you know, does that change things or what, I mean, you know?
Yeah, no, they're still.
Should be bound by the original agreements, but.
Drainage is dry, I mean, they're introducing, I, I don't know what they did, did they have an engineer review, or did this pop a pipe in because they thought they needed it?
Well, because he, when Colton said he talked to Minnesota, I think we talked to him, but he said that their engineer had recommended that they do the two 46s.
Did they wait until the feds were watching?
I was gonna say, did they, yeah, did they okay that, yeah.
Because everything upstream from them, that would be considered an improvement.
So they would have to have federal approval to do it. They should, well, they should.
Yeah.
I'm not saying they do.
But it's not a federal water one either, it's not a, it's not a federal one anymore, but they, you know, maybe you would have thought they would have consulted with us downstream, but.
And that's why I was asking you guys in the email, I was like, do you guys know anything about this?
Nope, I wasn't around then.
I mean, yeah, I remember being talked about over here, but I don't remember when exactly what they meant, if they did, or, you know, or informed us of that, or anything.
But, like Jim said, they usually have to put a, a plate in them to restrict the flows when they get so high.
Is there, isn't there, I don't even know where they're at exactly.
I don't know where these, the, the new twin pipes are, I, the one, the one I'm thinking of that they had to restrict is it'd be just west of Raven where there's a little stub that comes down to straight north of Tom Grassland's house.
So is a restrictor maybe gone now?
Or never put in.
Never put in, I guess.
And we have no, we have no authority to go up there and look ourselves either, it would have to be, we're relying on. I mean.
Do you need idiot Bolton Mink involved, or?
It probably wouldn't be the dumbest thing in the world, because then hopefully they can communicate with the engineer up there that did this, and ask the questions, you know, were the proper procedures, you know, done, I mean, did they follow the federal requirements?
And what recourse do we have?
Yeah, I mean, we could stick bigger pipes.
Put a restrictor in, that would be the recourse.
We, what you'd have to get.
But you're gonna have to go jump through the hoops to do that, you're still gonna have to get probably Bolton Mink involved.
Yeah.
Do you want me to engage him to like?
I would have looked into it, and, I mean, it's not gonna happen fast enough if we get a big rain, unfortunately, but I guess if it blows a pipe out, is that at a road crossing?
I haven't seen it, I don't know.
It's about a half a mile west, if I think about it, it's about a half a mile west of the church.
It, it's the one that goes down through, through Butches?
Yeah, to the east of Butches. Because I always thought, now that you guys are talking about, I always thought that that was a wetland on the north side of the road.
I think it is.
He said it's really small, yes, there.
I'd have to drive up there and maintain the water.
Yeah.
Well, because they're trying to drain it to farm it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
But, but like I said, I, just historical, I mean, that's, that's what's always happened, is anytime they put in a bigger pipe, the Iowa people say, you can't do that, and they restrict the pipe.
That's what Kenny always said, and I mean, because I'm just going off of memory, I spent a few years ago now, and.
It wasn't, it's not a first call.
But it's not to say that this time they just didn't ask, just do it, and we didn't know, but I don't, I don't definitely remember being informed about this at all.
Because I went through the Deer Creek watershed reports and stuff, and the last one I could find was 17, but it still wasn't this area. It was like other areas that we're talking about, so.
When we used to have Deer Creek watershed tour, and I remember some of those things being pointed out by Grayling, of course, you know.
Grayling and Stoffred.
Yeah, and Stoffred, and those two had a lot of knowledge and.
And we have all those reports.
Those are all knowns.
I mean, the generation that was there when it was put in is.
They got that institutional memory that said, this is what it was supposed to be.
There's very few of them left.
No, that's unfortunate, but now you're relying on taking through the records, which are still all down there.
Still all down there.
Yeah, I guess I'd get Jacob.
So is that a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll second it. No further discussion, all's favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion will carry. That might be something we're gonna have to look into too, is retaining those records.
Some of the Deer Creek watershed stuff is recorded.
It's recorded, but they have all the originals and all that, so, I mean.
We've got them.
Yes, eventually, we're gonna have to do maintenance on it eventually, that project is 50 years.
Because they do want it essentially all in this facility as opposed to the other facility.
We've got a lot of maps upstairs from when they did the.
Yeah.
They're small, you can't.
That might be a big project.
Me, two years, and a magnifying glass to read them.
All right, you got your names, claims?
Yep.
Okay.
Am I allowed to buy yours, so I can handle others?
Claims? I'll make a motion on claims.
I'll second a motion.
Second it, any further discussion? Your names, any further say aye?
Aye.
Both same side, motion will carry. All right, now we're on a big work group, you got more, don't you?
Just a couple.
Yeah. So DB 17, lap two first, that was.
Trey Pearson.
Yeah.
And he is gonna contact someone, I sent him the list of the people that we have, so.
Is this an open ditch? Or tile?
Um. I don't know, I've got.
Three tiles.
Not good for you.
Blowout on the main.
Is that the one where there's two lines, and the red one had two blowouts, and the blue one, you wanted it cleaned out?
Yeah.
It was a small section cleaned out.
Yeah, there's two blowouts on this, on the one, and then you want it coming down and over cleaned out.
Now, should the rest of it be looked at, or no?
So he's just, he's just asking for a repair, he's not asking for approval.
The blowouts are up here, and he wants that whole works looked at, and then all the way across, so he's already got it down as far as the main or the ditch, the clean out, what he wants cleaned, what he suggests that he wants cleaned out.
That's always a question, but I guess as long as nobody's questioning, I'm okay with him going in there and cleaning the section we want, and getting the blowouts fixed, that's, that's maintenance that should have been fixed anyway. Because we have, we've had brand-new ditches cleaned, and two years later, you're getting blowouts and sloughing. The people that take care of them are really appreciate that, because then it doesn't all end up downstream and plugged up again, so. I'd say, take a motion to approve this one.
I will make a motion to approve the tile blowout, plus the ditch clean out.
Yeah, I'll second it. No further discussion, all's favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, both same side, motion will carry. Aye, all same sign, motion will carry. Alright, Charlie, DD seventy-nine.
That is tile blowout. Charles Pierce and he's been unless Dennis popped to fix that.
Okay. Take a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve tile blowout repairs on DD seventy-nine, was it?
Yep. I will second it, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion will carry. Alright, DD forty-five.
So AJ brought this one up to my attention, it is a circle in the middle of the tracks. Yeah, so, um, we got a hold of Jacob and he's gonna get a hold of the railroad since he's already dealing with the railroad on another district.
Okay.
And see if we can get that fixed.
Okay, well, we gotta get it done. Take a, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, DD forty-five.
I'll second it, yeah.
Moving second it, and no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion will carry. Alright. DD nineteen. They already got it done, didn't they?
Jim Jaspers, yeah, it was a. Beaver Dam here to have Pop remove it, but I said, let's go ahead and pull out a work order to keep a good paper trail.
They gotta get it done, when they get somebody to come do it.
I'll make a motion to take out that beaver dam on DD nineteen.
I'll second it, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all same sign, motion will carry. And lastly, Gene Seabers in DD one.
Um, and that one, he does not have somebody lined up for that, so we might have to get someone for that and he says we probably gonna need a long reach. To get down in that ditch, he said if we come on the one side, there's no trees there, so they should be able to put in there fine.
Yeah, it was how many feet was it?
What's that?
Nineteen hundred, so about two thousand.
Three thousand.
Yeah, that's measured on beacon, but it's less than three thousand.
Yeah, it was going across two sections there.
Yeah, well, even, even the long reach would be level and threshold, so. Shouldn't be a problem, like Elliot's got one. Not sure who else does. Could be a couple of them.
Put that thing out for bids then?
Well, you could contact a couple of people. One or a couple that got long reach.
Yep.
Do you know who else got long reach? Elliot's got one that he won and then.
I.
Is it Rogus?
He's probably busy down.
Rogus might have one, or Gary Helgason over in Lake Mels, I think, if they ever purchased one or not, they talked about it.
I think they might have one, yep.
Yeah, otherwise, I don't know, Rich dude, Elliot's one of those.
Who did that, uh, initial clean out there that years? How long ago was that? DD one through?
It was the first year I was here.
Through Harris. Is that where this one's too or is it for?
Um, Gene Seabers. He's got a map over there.
Corner four fiftyth and Mallard.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember who did that initially that.
That was the last Wallace and Holland one, but.
But I can't remember who the contractor was.
I could look in the book.
Yeah, it might have been.
But it might, yeah.
It was finishing up in thirteen.
You get what you can get, I mean, like I said, LA's got one for sure, and I'm not sure about Rogus, but you can check it out. Take a motion to approve.
The ditch clean out on DD one?
DD one, yep.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it, any further discussion? None, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All same sign, motion will carry. Okay.
I think that's it.
Claims? I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second it.
It's just payroll.
Payroll?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't get it. Moving second, any further discussion? None, all those in favor say aye? Aye, all same sign, motion will carry. Report. Report. Play our areas quarter report. Taking motion to approve the reports. I'll make a motion to approve the reports. I will second it, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye? Aye. All same sign, motion will carry. Alright, and. Payroll eligibility, alright, Sheriff. Katrina Neam, how's that? Alright. Take a motion to approve that, I'll make a motion to approve that, I'll second it. No further discussion, all those in favor say aye? Aye, all same sign, motion will carry. Any liquor?
Cigarette.
Cigarettes.
Oh, and you don't have to, I think you signed.
We just approved it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve, who's it for?
Um, Come and Go.
Come and Go, I'll take the approval, consider that license for Come and Go, I can wish to approve that, I will second it. No further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all same sign, motion will carry, okay. ICAP member proxy.
Um, for the fiscal year twenty-six policy.
Okay.
It's just, um, authorizing who can sign and who gets.
Okay.
Who gets called on first when something happens.
I'll make a motion to approve the ICAP proxy.
I'll second that.
Okay, moving second it. Any further discussion, none, all those in favor say aye? All same sign, motion will carry. Sign them on the bottom here, Jackie?
Um, Pop, this one, yep. Other ones, no.
Okay. Alright. Oh, okay, this is, uh.
Couple down.
Yeah, for people service, nothing in the buildings or grounds right now. Melissa, are you on?
Yeah, she was on.
Melissa? They working?
Uh-oh.
Teflon ducts. She's had problems before.
Looks like she's called in instead of using them.
Alright, no, wait, she comes on, jump in. Alright, uh, people services, so. You're up.
I don't have anything, other than the, the.
Contract.
The contracts for annual, uh, maintenance agreement with Ziegler for our generators. I, I didn't even, I didn't get that email, it came directly to Jackie's name, so.
So this is the annual.
Should be three, I believe there's three of them.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, there is, yeah.
The last year we did load testing on the lift station generator, so that's, I mean, it's, it runs through the faces, so this will just be the smaller. Of the annuals.
Yep. Well, we gotta keep it running, so take a motion to approve. The, uh, maintenance contracts.
I'll make a motion to approve the maintenance contracts.
I will second it, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye? Aye, all same sign, motion will carry.
I think I figured it out.
Alright, well, then we'll let you speak.
Sorry. Okay. Tomorrow I have a meeting with ALI Energy and then a meet and greet with INB Energy. And then on Wednesday, Senator Grassley will be in Northwood at eight AM. And then I have a childcare alliance meeting and we are gonna set up for the housing conference on Wednesday afternoon. And then Thursday is that all day housing conference at the Music Mans Square, so if you still wanna come, um, I can get you in, you'll just have to pay at the door.
Okay. Alright. Any questions?
And then, uh, next week, next week I'll have this technology figured out.
Okay. It'll change by then, so hang on. Alright, appreciate it for the updates.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, department head discussion, Jackie, you got something on that?
Okay, um, basically, I was told at the last general by Joel that our computers are at the end of their life again. So I have to figure out what to do going forward. I was gonna stick with Precinct Atlas and it seems like there's more people that are switching and it's just making me a little nervous being a little county if. The, um, fees and stuff are gonna go up more if more people jump ship and I'm just. Kinda concerned, so what I'm thinking about right now is, um, switching to, um, ten X. And that is sold through the same company that I bought the election, the rest of the equi- yeah. So I, I've, I've heard good things about it so far, I know it's gonna be a change again, it'll switch from. Tablet, from, um, computers to tablets, but it sounds like there's a lot less maintenance and stuff, which will make Collins' life easier and ours too. And, um. It al- it always comes with a cost though, like the laptops were gonna be over fifteen thousand dollars. This is gonna be thirty some thousand dollars, but then the annual is a little bit less, like a thousand dollars less. And, um, they will let me, like they've done in the past, let me pay for it over two years, so I have my fifteen thousand dollars still in my budget for purchasing stuff. And I just got done paying for the, um, FESs, so then I could start paying in twenty-six for the ten X. So that, I just wanted to give you an update that that's what I'm thinking about doing.
As long as you guys are communicating, think it's a good move, but I mean, it's.
Sounds like you got it covered, so.
I talked to Joel and I talked to some of the other IT directors, um, especially the one from Sioux County and he said it was a huge, I mean, they're a bigger county, so they, you know, but they said, he said it basically took it from going. A week to prep all their stuff to a couple hours in the afternoon and he said it was a lot easier for the pole workers to, the equipment, so.
That's good, cause, I mean, you know, we have a lot of people volunteer that are, never had any computer skills, so. That's good.
So hopefully, I, I, I'm torn because I'm. I have been loyal to Precinct Atlas and. Tammy's been great to work with, but I just, I, I'm just getting nervous about.
This is a system everybody else is kinda going to.
Uh, several, several counties. There are like twenty or thirty of them now that have switched, yeah. And they're getting some bigger ones, which that's what's ma- makes me nervous.
Sure.
And one of them was Cerro Bordo and they were the ones that created, it was, Precinct Atlas was created in Cerro Bordo County, so when they jumped ship, that, that made me.
Made you a little nervous, sure.
Yeah, so anyway.
You're the ones that had to deal with it.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, you know what, yeah, I'm gonna go up and shop and bolt, but that's as far as that goes, you're gonna have to deal with the equipment.
As long as you're staying on top of it, yeah.
Trying, so anyway, that's my update.
Alright, perfect, anybody else?
I kind of gave you an update for myself, um, as far as the office, um, busy with boat rentals and kinda kind of fishing.
Okay, perfect, alright.
Interior building is supposed to start, but.
Oh, yeah, this is the start date.
I think actually last Monday. Yeah, there's nothing that's happened, so.
Good thing that's, that's not so much weather related there, a lot of that.
Right.
Doing site stuff, so maybe they'll have to switch gears, so, alright.
Only thing I got is I did get approved for the, half of the body cam, well. Half, half of the cameras, the body cam, half to the casino.
Oh, good.
So I'd like to start moving forward with that, so.
And a reminder on that, anybody who received money and it's more than what they've budgeted, we need to do an amendment.
Amendment's in. Okay. Alright, perfect, any supervisor comments?
Nope, I.
I just.
We have the executive board meeting.
Yep.
You guys are all there.
Yep. So we've been talking about central avenue with attention and, and this ties in a little bit, what we're working on with the handbook and stuff too, but. We finally got a tally of the PTO time that's built up down there. And it's phenomenal, not that it'll break the company, but it's phenomenal, I mean, we have one person that has a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar payout as of today. Uh, almost seven hundred thousand to other employees and some of them are well in the window, they're two hundred and fifty hours max probably type of deal that if we, if we do make a switch here at the county, that's gonna, we're gonna have to have a max. You know, and, uh, but there's several others in the five and six hundred dollar range and it's like, you know, it's a pretty big golden parachute and, uh, it's been hidden from us long before I got on the board and, and they finally got the state auditor finally got it from them. So, and we just, Kyle Stecker just sent it off to me today and all the other board members and it was, we knew it was huge, um, but we could not get that from the director and he just fought us on it and. It finally came out and, and not that he's not doing a good job with the rest of the business, that's not it, but it's just, that, that's a big deal. And, uh, so as we're working on the policy book, we're gonna have to keep some of these things in mind and as we fix our policies and try to move ahead with something that's good or better and. And still do the things we need to do and maybe save some budget money too, so keep that in mind. Anything for next week's agenda? Get pretty well, couple of places.
Are you both, or are either of you gonna be at Grassley that I need to post that?
I.
Post that thing, cause I might be available.
Okay, I don't, well, so it's at nine, I've, no, I doubt about it.
Or was it nine?
Nine o'clock, it says, or no, wait, I'm looking somewhere, so.
I think Melissa said eight o'clock.
What did she say?
No, she said eight.
Eight, okay.
Is that what she said?
Just put them down. Cause I've got two other meetings that day, I've got Iowa workforce and then Shannon's got a work schedule on her feeds that afternoon, so I doubt if I'll make it, but. Maybe AJ will, never know, so. Alright, uh, anything else? Okay, if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, meaning it's adjourned. Alright, thank you.